Notice of meeting the Balconies Heights Crime Control and Prevention District Board of Directors. Take notice that a regular called meeting of the Crime Control and Prevention District Board of Directors of the City of Balconies Heights, Texas will be held on the 21st day of April 2025 at 5:30 PM in the Justice Center located at 3300 Hillcrest Drive, Balconies Heights, Texas. To act upon any lawful subject which may come before said meeting, including among others, the following business. One, a call to order and recording of quorum. And we do have a quorum. Approval of the minutes for our previous meeting on October 28th, 2024?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Motion has been seconded. Is there any discussion? No discussion, we'll do roll call vote. Mr. Valverde?
Yay.
Mr. LaSaya?
Yay.
Mr. Rodriguez? Mr. Rodriguez? Mr. Rodriguez said yay. Mr. Sellers?
Yay.
Mr. Burton?
Yay.
Thank you. Citizens to be heard, are there any citizens to be heard at this time?
Not at this time.
Thank you. So we will move on to our business items. Number one, the board will review and discuss the upcoming budget calendar for the fiscal year 2020, October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2026. Thank you, Mr. Messick.
You hear Mr. Chairman, members of the board? This is a discussion item, and it's where we present our annual budget calendar for the FY '26 Crime Control and Prevention District. In essence, this kicks off the budget cycle for the city. Of course, local government code has us, requires us to start the district's budget earlier in April so that it can conclude in July and be incorporated into the city's budget, where it is subject to change over the summer. And so April kicks it off, and what we'll be doing tonight on business item number three is requesting the call for projects. Then we'll come back in May and present those. I'll have the preliminary budget there for you to see in May. In June, we vote on that budget and send it to council, and in July, a regular council session, you'll have a public hearing on it and vote to accept or reject the budget. And everything's done by July, it gets incorporated into it. So we'll be asking tonight to call for projects in business item number three, which means we'll just print it in the newspaper and say, any of the residents can come forward and say, I would like to spend money out of the crime control to buy the police department a helicopter, or whatever it is that they would like, and we would take that in consideration in May. Okay? And so, questions?
Mr. Burton?
Thank you. Does, does crime control include safety?
Crime control is a pretty specific fund that's met for deterrence of crime. And so, and it's, local government code has two pages of what you can do with it, but it's for the purpose of crime prevention and whatever falls upon that. And so, what was your idea? I guess that would be a better way of doing it.
I see children sitting on the curb waiting for buses. Cars just rushing by and everything. I thought maybe crime control might be able to have some available funds, put some benches out there or even coverage structure for, for the children on that stretch of gentleman. I think that would fall under the safety. But, you know, I, I, I just, that's why I was asking if it's just crime or?
Yeah, and I hate yes and no answers, but yes and no, could it be probably? But would it be better to be done in the child safety fund, probably? And if we could do it there, I wouldn't want to put it in crime control, just to make sure it's fenced as it should be. But, but thank you for that. That's a good thing to know going into the budget cycle. Thank you.
Crime being recognized, please?
Yes, can you speak into your microphone?
Yeah. So, in reference to this crime control, I have some pretty solid questions I want to ask you. How much are we spending on the funds that we have currently and have been historically on strictly police funding? And how much have you actually spent on the actual allocation, which the statute requires a certain percentage of the crime control prevention funds that should be used for crime prevention? Leasing is leasing, but it's not necessarily crime prevention. What, give me the, the, the two examples of percentages. How much are we spending on police? And how much have we actually spent on its actual mandated crime prevention? Anything other than at L?
Roughly 82% of your budget, of the crime control district's budget, is spent on personnel expenses, which is a legal expense under, under crime control, under local government code.
It's 18% left over. And what are we funding with that 18% aside? The salary?
Maintenance of our justice center. Maintenance of our justice center to include facility maintenance and utilities.
The cost of all the bad type stuff. The facility maintenance you have by year, you approved 74,459, and you have used 14,089 today, correct?
Yes, sir.
20% of the budget.
Right.
Why is the facility maintenance so high? Why is that 74,045?
It's a historical average. You can see from last year, it was pretty low, that 60,000 number. Prior to that, we've had years where it's been 85,000, and it depends on what breaks, like the air conditioning. Hopefully, we've got that fixed, the roof also. And also, that number is a little bit high. The air conditioner, the roof, we've had problems with that. All of that's been fixed. That number is a little high because it was upped a little bit to balance the budget so that expenses equal revenues. It's our wiggle room in there instead of having a contingency. So hopefully, we won't spend all of that. And of course, anything, as you know, that's not spent goes into your fund balance, which is about three months' worth right now.
We're not, we're share costing with the city? Because I remember when I built this place back in 2000, I was cutting the chance for this local, this, we're seeing the entire operation of it being built.
Mr. Rodriguez, can you speak into the microphone? It's hard to hear you.
You can hear me. Don't worry about it. So, one of the things that, that we looked at at that time was that there was supposed to be an interlocal agreement between the City of Balconies Heights and the Crime Control Prevention District. And that agreement was to have shared space, and it was supposed to be leased to the city because the city really was not the intended entity that was supposed to be in here. It was supposed to be just the police, the crime control and all that stuff. So eventually, we moved in when I was mayor here, and we came into the building, and there was supposed to be drafted an agreement. Did that agreement ever get drafted? Did we have one on file?
I do not know that, sir. That was before my time.
So more than likely, we're probably operating without an interlocal agreement between ourselves. So that's number one. Secondly, with these expenses that are being absorbed by the crime control district, the city does not absorb any of those costs, right? From its general operating budget. It's strictly coming out of the crime control prevention district.
Again, a yes or no answer to that. The entire police department, 45% of their expenses is allocated to the crime control. The other 55% goes to the general fund.
45% what? Sorry?
45% of all police salary expenses goes to the district. 55% of it is absorbed in the general fund.
55% goes to the general fund. We're funding the general fund out of this. We're basically raiding money out of here to give to the general operating budget in the city. Is that correct?
No, we're not, we're not raiding it per se. We're not transferring money, we're not transferring money out of this fund into the general fund. We're taking costs from the general fund to put into the crime control district for a legal expense that we're authorized to do.
No, but you just said 55% you put into the general operating fund.
No, sir. 55% of police, of all the salary costs for the police, 55% of it is paid out of the general fund.
You said 45%.
45% is paid, 45% is paid out of the crime control district.
45%? And 55% comes out of the city general operating budget. Am I correcting your assessment?
Yes. For police salaries.
Out of that monies that you have, that 45%, you're telling me that only 18% is only being used actually for what it was intended to be created for?
No, sir. All of this is being used as, as is authorized by the law.
Right. I mean, it's under authorization, obviously, but I'm looking at the percentages. And mind you, Lord, I'm not putting you on the grill for this. I'm just trying to get this clarified, if I understand, because in the future, we need to be looking at this fund as a source to balance us out down the line. We got it encumbered right now for 20 years, right? We're on a 20-year contract for this thing?
Yes.
It's going to take a vote of the citizens in order to be able to, to change that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So, because there's an awful lot of money that's floating through this, this fund, and I just don't see how, when we have a general operating budget, it's supposed to encumber all these costs for our police and fire. And here, we're utilizing a very large percentage, and historically, we've been using a very large percentage of that, and 82%. And, and then you just gave me the 45 out of the crime control and 55 out of the general operating budget. So there's, I see a big disparity there, and I think we're going to have to look in the future as to how we can equalize that to benefit our city, because there's money here that can be used for other purposes. And under the statute, under the statute.
Right. Well, let's consider this. If we had no crime control and all that sales tax went into the general fund, then where would all the police salaries be paid? In the general fund? And, okay, but still, the budget is the same. It's just a bigger number at that point. Yes.
My point.
Yeah.
That's my whole point.
Right, and so.
If we didn't have this, the general operating budget would not be able to sustain it. So you've actually made my point of what I was trying to get across. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
I'd like to provide some clarification because the.
Well, I don't need any clarification. It was just.
Thank you, appreciate the clarification.
I'm the chair. So.
Mr. Chairman would also respect.
You're not recognized anymore. You should leave the floor. You should leave the floor. You're done.
I still have the floor.
No, you said thank you, and you're done. So. I'm going to provide, I'm going to provide some clarification. I'm the board, I'm the chair.
Yes, but I still.
And now you are out of order.
No, I had the floor.
You are out of order.
I did not yield the floor. Did you hear me say I yield the floor? Okay, Mr. Chairman, if you know parliamentary procedure, I did not yield the floor. Okay? So I still have the floor. So what I'm saying is, this is the conversation that I was asked of, Mr. Messick. I don't need comments or any kind of other input from you on it.
Well, you may not, you may not think you do.
Right.
But the people here do.
Well, the only thing.
So I'm going to provide, I'm going to provide some.
Factually.
I'm going to provide some clarification.
Okay.
Because you misconstrued some of the information.
Okay. As usual, you always want to just continue going, so go right ahead. Go right ahead, sir.
So, the point that Mr. Messick was saying is that the taxes, the sales taxes that fund, the sales taxes that fund the crime control district, if they did not fund the crime control district, would go straight to the general fund.
Fundamentally elementary.
So, the total amount of tax dollars that the city receives and spends on police and safety would not change, regardless of whether this crime control district existed or not. So you are intimating or hinting that our budget would go down if this crime control district was not in place. And I'm saying, and clarifying that, the budget would be equal to the current state with the, with the crime control district and the general fund.
When you finish?
No.
I cannot be recognized? To respond?
Mr. Chairman, may I be recognized?
So we'll move forward.
Okay.
So, business item number two.
Yeah, that's great.
The board will review and discuss and take appropriate action to adopt an order approving the district finances through March 31st, 2025.
And for this item, it's your, your quarterly budget and financial report or balance statement. So for this, it's for the period of January 1 through March 31st, 2025 is your balance sheet, and of course, it is balanced as all of our city funds are. With a balance sheet, you're looking to make sure that your assets equal total liabilities and fund balance, and of course, it does. Your revenue over expenses at this point of the year is negative 85,000, and that's due to the fact that our collection of sales taxes are two months behind. Typically, we get 70, around 75,000 a month in sales taxes. So if you add that 150,000 back in, we're actually in the positive by 70,000. So overall, the position of, of the district right now is pretty good. Looking at your budget with it, revenues are at 36% coming in so far, and that's because, like I said, sales taxes are in the arrears. But your expenses, especially on the, on the salary side, is only 46%. It should be around 50. So that's the savings, that's always good to see. And overall expenses in the district are 44%, which is below the budget target of 50%. I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Chairman?
You may be recognized.
So, on that budget, if you have 25, you've got 71,000 approved for overtime.
And, and we're, we're just on the financials right now.
I'm sorry?
We're just considering an order to approve the financial report.
Okay.
For, just through the last month. Is it the financials or the budget? It sounded like you said budget.
The budget, sir, is included with the financials, so I, yes, sir.
So, and you have a 25, you're at, right now, we're 51% of the budget in overtime, correct?
Yes, sir.
Part-time, who are we using part-time? 18 is full-time also.
So we actually have 17 full-time and one part-time, and as the salaries are, you know, split 55, 45, part of the part-timer salary is included here as well. Yes, sir.
Is there any other discussion?
I have a comment, a question. Mr. Mr. Messick, the budget, the way it's presented, as the same way has been done for how many years?
Yeah, as long as I've been here, this is pretty much the format or, or what we include in this budget. Yes, sir.
And this is included in the same audit that we get from the state, that they do the seal of approval and accept, and we've received no discrepancies?
From, from the city's internal or external audit?
External, right.
From our audit, yes, sir.
Okay. So everything that we've been doing is within the guidelines and the parameters of the law?
Yes, sir, of course.
Thank you.
Is any further discussion? All right, this is an action item. Do we have a, a motion?
I'll make the motion to move forward.
All right, do I have your second?
I'll second.
Thank you, first and second. It will, is there a further discussion? If no further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Valverde?
Yay.
Mr. LaSaya?
Yay.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Nay.
Mr. Sellers?
Yay.
Mr. Burton? Motion passes 4-1 with Mr. Rodriguez voting no. Third, the board will review, discuss, and take appropriate action on an order calling for projects for the 2025-2026 fiscal year.
And for this business item, gentlemen, I resort back to the budget calendar. What we're asking here is to approve a call for projects, which will allow the city secretary to announce this in the express news. They will have, any call for projects will be due to me by May 15th, and we'll have it ready for you on your, on your next meeting here on May 19th.
Any discussions or questions for Mr. Messick? Mr. LaSaya?
Yes, sir. Do we have a guideline or a package for call for projects?
Honestly, no, because no one has ever done so.
Okay.
It could be something as simple as writing on a piece of paper, or you could make it, you could make your own full-blown budget, but any resident can submit whatever they desire.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is an action item. Is there a, a motion?
So.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And second, is there any further discussion? Mr. Sellers?
Can you clarify what projects for, upcoming projects we're going to have that is unforeseen yet?
No, sir. It's pretty much standard what we do with the budget.
Do you have any idea what we're supposed to be taking appropriate action on?
Yes. What we're asking for on this item is that we advertise in the newspaper so that the residents can see that we are asking them for their input, and if they do have something, they can submit it to us for consideration. In the lack of, I will have the proposed budget for you in May either way. And again, it's just a requirement by local government code. We have to advertise it, so.
Okay, so this has got nothing to do with dollars?
Not at this point, no. We're, basically, they're looking for ideas. Like I said, maybe a resident wants a helicopter. They can, they can ask for that.
Okay, thank you.
Police departments wanted a helicopter for 20 years, and they're not.
All right, any further discussion? All right, Mr. Valverde?
Hey.
Mr. LaSaya?
Yay.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yang.
Mr. Sellers?
Yay.
And Mr. Burton?
Yeah.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
All right, adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second, sir.
All right, it's been second, and we will adjourn at 5:53 PM.
Actually, just turn 6:01.
Can you repeat the time, Eric?
Yes, 6:01 PM. Notice is hereby given that the above call meeting of the governing body of the City of Balconies Heights, Texas, will be held on Monday, April 21, 2025 at 6:00 PM in the Justice Center located at 3300 Hillcrest Drive, Balconies Heights, Texas, 78201. To consider and act upon any lawful subject which may come before said meeting, including, among others, the following items to be discussed and acted upon. We're going to call to order and recording of a quorum. We have a quorum present so we can conduct meeting, and we're going to do invocation and pledges of allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flags. So who would like to lead on the prayer? David? Mr. Sellers, Councilman Sellers?
Those committed to our charge, please give us wisdom and gather the seats. May they be fair and just.
Amen. So we're going to go into the public comment period, and before we go into the public comment period, I have a statement that I would like to read and put into the record, Ms. Merle. I'd like this to be placed into the record. As mayor of Balconies Heights, I've always believed that leadership means putting the public interest above politics. That's why I feel compelled to speak on the troubling series of agenda items presented today. Each one singularly focused on me. Let's be honest, every one of the council members placing these items on the agenda is currently up for reelection. I am not, and yet, I'm the one being accused of playing politics. The hypocrisy is clear, and it is disappointing. The entire spectacle comes just days after a front-page story in the San Antonio Express and News highlighting my efforts to clean up the financial and administrative mess I inherited. I stand by every decision I've made in pursuit of transparency and accountability, even when it's uncomfortable for others.
Just briefly, is this, is this part of the public comment?
This is part of the public comment, or it's part of the record, well, it's part of the record to read before the public comment. So.
It's not on the agenda?
It's my just statement to the citizens.
Point of order. Okay. He, he is a citizen, he can.
You actually can't, I actually had to look that up, but you, you can't slip around off the dais and speak during public comment if you're a member of the governing body.
When can I read this?
If, if it relates to agenda items, anytime the agenda.
Well, let me do this, do exactly what they're doing. Let me go to the podium and act as a citizen and speak just like they are.
And you'd be, you're a member of the governing body.
So are they, and they have these items on the agenda they're going to speak about.
Yes, as members of the governing body, you can speak on anything on the agenda when it comes up, but the public comment section is just members of the public, not the.
Well, I'm going to rule over you. I'm the, I'm the presiding officer, so I'll go ahead and move forward. Even more troubling, several of these items appear to be legally questionable and should never have made it to the agenda. And yet, mysteriously, our city attorney, who has not missed a meeting in years, is suddenly unavailable for this one. The fact alone should raise serious concerns for anyone who cares about due process and good governance. Let me be very clear. I will stand mute on these items, not out of silence, but out of principle. I refuse to waste one cent of taxpayer resources engaging in what is clearly a political motivated stunt. I have too much respect for the voters of Balconies Heights, and I trust their ability to see through this charade. There's a saying in politics, when you don't have a record to run on, you bring out a scapegoat. And if that's what I'm being made to be, an innocent lamb brought to the slaughter, so be it. I will carry that burden with dignity because I know the truth will prevail. Leadership is not measured by how loud you are attacking others, but by how steady you remain in serving the people. I'll continue doing just that. Thank you for your attention. So we have now the first person, Mr. Jimmy Hernandez, that would like to come forward under citizens to be heard.
Mayor, City Council, Administrator Jocelyn, and Chief of Police and Fire Chief, and all the citizens in the room. I'm Jimmy Hernandez. I live here on 112 Leisure, and I want to first off just say that I, I want to thank Andy Jocelyn and the City Council and the mayor. For last month, we finally made some progress, and we have proved unanimously, I was surprised, the terrors for economic development at the mall. I mean, to me, that was, that was a huge accomplishment, and I want to encourage you guys to not stop there because Fredericksburg Road is like the face of our city, and it is really, I'm going to say in, I'm going to, how should I say? It looks old, right? We need to up, update it. We need economic development. We need other businesses and developers to come in, and we need to offer economic, I'm going to say incentives to bring up Fredericksburg Road. I think if you do the two projects together, they will feed off of each other, and then we can, we can, you know, get some revenues going there. The other thing I want to ask the city council and mayor is like, guys, let's, let's move forward. I'm, I'm really disappointed and saddened in looking at the agenda today. The thing is, is that you guys are constantly fighting with each other, and y'all have lost focus of what's in the best interest of the city. And bringing somebody, let's say, trying to bring somebody down, whether you're in the right or whether you're in the wrong, you're disrupting city business, and we can't focus on what would really improve the city, which is those economic development, or how about redoing our park? You know, the, the park is old, it's outdated, it's, it's, you know, the restrooms are never even clean, we don't have walking trails there. Actually, there is a walking trail, but you can't see it. So there's, there's many other things that we could be focused on, and if city council would prioritize putting those needs above, you know, what's, what's the word I'm looking for? Just tearing down somebody else? It, it's like a personal vendetta, and it's just. It, it's like a personal vendetta and it's just going back and forth and nothing's getting accomplished. So I just really want you guys to think about what's in the best interest of the city. I really don't understand the attacks at this point in the mayor. He's not up for election. Why, why not wait till next year? Wha- what good is gonna come out of it? You're just gonna make things worse? The city's not gonna get along? It's ridiculous. And one last thing I wanna say is, thank you to, uh, Councilman Valverde. I know that, uh, he's getting ready to retire and I appreciate your service. Uh, you know, it doesn't go unrecognized. And so I watch a lot of the, the meetings and, um, previously when I was on the, the zoning commission, when I sat in, you know, he's been around a long time, so I appreciate your wisdom and your service. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
May I be recognized, Mayor? Right, so it says, it says during citizens to be heard section. No council member. No discussion or response is required to the speaker.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Sepulveda. I'm a proud representative of the Texas Municipal Police Association. I'm a retired sergeant from Balcony Heights Police Department. So when I tell you I've walked these streets, protected these families, and served this city with everything I had, I mean it. And I will be damned if I sit back in silence while the mayor slanders the badge I wore for over two decades. Let's be clear. Calling our officers bullies with badges isn't leadership. It's cowardice. It's a cheap politic stunt by a man who's more concerned with settling personal scores than keeping this city safe. Mayor Rodriguez isn't fixing a problem. He's creating crisis. Proposition A is a blatant power grab.
Mayor, your microphone's not on. Mayor, your microphone is not on.
It instructed us that citizens can talk and criticize the government, the city. But if they individually are attacking someone individually of a council member or a mayor like that, that's not allowed.
It's.
It's in his title, Mayor.
It's a complex question. It, uh, there's not a clear definition in Texas, but a lot of courts have looked at it in terms of whether or not it ties to professional duties, I guess. So just saying someone is a liar probably is permissible, but saying they're a liar because they hold a lie about some policy thing or something. That distinction is what courts will look at as far as First Amendment speech, you know, affected or just a personal.
I just want to refrain anyone from personally attacking.
It's gonna be your call. Ruling like that is gonna be your presiding officer. The majority, of course, can always overrule you if they think about to do so, but initial ruling is up to you.
And so that's what I understood from Mr. Garza's ruling in our last meeting that we had. He gave us very clear instructions on that and he said, as long as they're not attacking you directly or any council member directly, they can criticize the city all they want, but not.
Can't prohibit someone from criticizing.
Yeah, but not the individual himself. The law changed on that. He told us.
Yes, if it's.
Okay.
Out of single, you should, comments in general should be directed at councils.
So Mr. Sepulveda, just keep your comments in general.
I'll, I'll go ahead and walk off, but I'm gonna tell you, this comment was something that you put out there.
No problem. Thank you so much. Mr. Sines, you're up. April Newsletter.
Thank you.
Would you like to go to the podium? As a citizen, because you're right here sitting as a councilman.
You cannot go to the podium as a member of the governing body, so you, it is on the agenda and you can speak on the item as a council member.
I'll put on.
He has gone to the podium and left his position.
No, I've not left, I've not left the dais to talk up there. I've always spoken from the dais.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Sines. Go right ahead. Go right ahead, Mr..
The attorney said that this is part of the agenda item. I'll discuss it during the agenda.
Mayor's overruling me. He says it's okay.
Go right ahead. Go ahead. I'm ruling, go ahead.
Thank you. So remember that ruling. So in the April Newsletter, the mayor made some, some comments that weren't fully truthful, so in it, he claimed that he has pride, try, prioritized transparency.
I would just say, sorry, if you are gonna do this as a, if you're taking off your governing body hat, putting on a member of the public hat, if you would step down from the dais that way.
That's exactly what I was.
Your absence for that portion of.
See, we should really get the rulings right because that's exactly what we were instructed. And that's what he did last.
That's not my advice now, but if you're gonna do it that way, then.
Okay, well, this is why we need to have our regular attorney here and he's not here. And so this is just a terrible injustice.
I'll, I'll hold off on this. I'll pass on this, this agenda item.
So you're up on, on another one, property taxes.
Yeah, so property taxes. I recently heard that.
You're gonna speak as a council member or you're speaking as a citizen? You're speaking as a citizen, go to the podium. That's my ruling.
So.
So which one is it?
I'm going, I'm going to point out the inconsistency in your, your rulings. So you allow, let, let me, let me speak, please. Let me speak.
Councilman Sines, I need to have clarification before you continue. We went in five minutes, discussed this already. Are you speaking as a council member in your position as a council member? Or are you speaking as a citizen? If you're speaking as a citizen and at the podium and addresses.
Okay.
If you're speaking as a council member, remain where you're at and this is not an item for public comment period.
I can talk about tax, property taxes as a council member.
Not on the agenda. He just told us that.
Property taxes are not on the agenda. Although we are talking about budgetary impact of your microphone's not.
You can talk about anything you want, whether or not it's on the agenda as a member of the public. So if his interpretation is that you can do that, you can take your councilman hat off and step up to the podium. You can talk about whatever you want for five minutes.
I will, I will go to the podium for this one. However, I will point out the, the inconsistency.
Sir, excuse me, you're still out of order. You still have not clarified where you're standing on.
I just.
Council member or a citizen. Make that very clear. It's very easy.
I, I just said I will go to the podium to read this.
Okay, go to the podium.
However, as a council member. As a council member, I'm, as a council.
Say it over here.
I'll say it over there.
Because as a councilman, you're violating the open meeting that, because you're discussing an item that's not on the agenda. And if you study your rules, you can't do that. And we've been giving.
Thank you.
From our attorneys on that.
My name is Mark Sines. I live at five oh one Balconies Heights Road. So first, I would like to point out the hypocrisy and what the mayor just did by allowing himself to speak from the dais and, and citizens to be heard, how he's, however, he's.
Meeting is being interrupted and disrupted by Councilman.
That's a conversation he's having with the attorney. Something you do all the time, sir.
So we can give him the due attention that he has.
Sir.
I'm trying to be fair here to everybody.
What Mr. Lozaya did.
Instead of removing you, which I should have done a long time ago. So please watch yourself. This is your last chance, okay? So go ahead.
Okay. Again, the hypocrisy is, is pretty astounding in that you leave your seat and talk and have private conversations with the city attorney or the city administrator during meetings all the time. So to hold Mr. Lozaya to a standard that you do not hold yourself accountable to is hypocrisy at its finest.
Property taxes.
What I'm talking about, what I wanted to talk about is property taxes and some misinformation that was recently given out. So on Saturday, some information was given out about property taxes that was incorrect and grossly misstating the impact of the property tax increase that the city of Balconies Heights did during the twenty twenty-four budget cycle. In that budget cycle, the city of Balconies Heights raised property tax from point five eight three to point six zero four. Something that was, again, I've said this before, was not taken lightly. It was something that the city council had to do in order to maintain our, our current level of services and not impact our, our headcount and have to lay off employees. So in that, the council decided to raise it to point six zero four. There are members of the council that have claimed that their taxes went up thousands of dollars and it was gonna cost them potentially to lose their home uh, because of that increase from point five eight three to point six zero four. So I would point out that the main driver of the, the, the property tax increase that people are paying is the evaluation. That was, that is done by the balcony, or sorry, by the Bear County Appraisal District. So I have two residences here, two residents here that I was, I looked at just to compare. So in one of them, the property was assessed at a hundred and sixty-three thousand, what, seven hundred and thirteen dollars in twenty twenty-one. In twenty twenty-five, that assessed value went up to two hundred and six thousand. So that is a substantial increase. The taxes for the city of Balconies Heights in twenty twenty-one on the appraised value was a hundred and seventy, of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. That's not including the homestead cap. With a taxable value of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-six, the tax of, on a tax rate of point five eight three was eight hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents. In twenty twenty-five, with the tax rate of point six zero four and appraised value of two hundred and six thousand dollars and a taxable value of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, the estimated tax was a thousand seventy, fifty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents. That's a total change of two hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-three cents. That is what the increase to Balconies Heights was. Now, the increase that was due solely to the tax increase from point five eight three to point six zero four was thirty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Thank you, Mr. Sines, very much. Your three minutes is up.
So I would ask for an extension.
Let's move on down.
Mr. Mr. The council, I like. The council by, by majority vote can provide an extension.
Let's move forward.
Miss, Mr.
We're finished.
I'd like to be recognized.
No, I already told you no. So let's move forward. Three minute rule. Let's go. I told you zero tolerance. We're not gonna do this. Let's move forward. Let's move this agenda. We're not gonna be here till ten, eleven o'clock at night.
All right, thank you for your consistency.
Very much for your time. Thank you for your comment. Thank you very much. Ms. Suzanne DeLeon, please. Two, uh, three twenty-three Crestview.
Thank you very much. Counsel, I'm Suzanne DeLeon, three two three Crestview, Mayor Emerita of Balconies Heights. I've served our city honorably and humbly from two thousand four to two thousand eight on city council and from two thousand eight to two thousand four as mayor. It was my honor to be able to do so and many great strides were made. This upcoming election is crucial and I owe it to our community that you know the truth. And to quote someone from last year's campaign, enough is enough, and I totally agree with that. If any of our government officials have an adult daughter, adult son, who does not live in Balconies Heights, but uses your mailing address to vote in our city, that is illegal. It is not right. So her votes are illegal, yet they were counted. And I'm wondering if all of y'all are okay with this. And the city should not allow anyone who has property that is owned commercial, yet lives in that commercial building, uses it for, um, his address to vote in our elections, running for city council, been told by numerous, numerous times by staff that all they have to do is get a special use permit and continue to do that. So I'm just concerned. If anyone running for office will not abide by our city ordinances and policies, I would suspect that they will not abide by them if they should be in office. This really concerns me and I hope it does you as well. It's been almost a year from May twenty twenty-four that the city has been filled with conflict, lies, payoffs, and many legitimate complaints have been filed against someone sitting on the dais from city staff, police officers, association and public citizens. This is not consensus building. Go, and it goes way beyond our city. Many Bear County elected officials and residents and some outside of Bear County have brought this to our attention and they have heard of all the discord in Balconies Heights and what we suffer. This is embarrassing for our city and our city's reputation is diminishing. Many lies were told about me last year in the May twenty twenty-four campaign. It was said that I received twenty thousand dollars from a developer. Citizens were told that there was proof. Well, if there was proof of this libelous allegations, legal authorities would have been notified immediately. And I have never deceptively taken any money from anyone. These blatant lies about me, about the incumbents and a new candidate are unforgivable. Furthermore, if any leader of the city refuses to take the city's mandatory background check to have access to city hall secure areas, we wonder, there must be something hidden there. Why won't they agree to the background check? So in order to, for them to enter the secure areas, they must always have an escort with them, which takes city staff away from their important and required duties. What is it that they don't want us to know? If someone runs for office with no city government experience.
Time is up.
Seldom or never attend council meetings.
Stop where you're.
Possibly have been.
Stop where you're at. I'll have you removed from the premises. Please.
I appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you so much for your time on your, thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Flores, Mr. Rudy Flores, you have the, uh, next item on the agenda.
Thank you. This is Rudy Flores, seven one six Beryl Drive. All right, guys. So a gentleman earlier spoke a little while ago and said that, uh, there's things that are disrupting city business. He is damn straight. There he is. There's a lot of things that are disrupting city business. Um, there's a certain older pickup truck going around during peaceful time, right before Easter, and bullying people on, on the bullhorn. Our people that were there for a meeting to sit down and eat, relax and enjoy, had to hear somebody going up and down the streets hollering through a bullhorn. The bullying needs to stop. The, the Red Cross thing, the bullying needs to stop. You guys need to understand what happened with the Red Cross. You need to ask questions. You need to be informed. He's gonna say, you're lying. You're making it up. He's gonna play that victim role, just like he did when he first made his first statement to come up here. He made that first statement and then he doesn't let somebody else make a statement. He made it from the podium. He made it from up there.
Excuse me, sir.
What's the difference?
Are you referring to me?
Whoever made those statements.
Well, you're pointing.
I'm not making it, no.
Pointing at me.
I'm not pointing. This is a pen.
Just clarify for the public.
Do I get some time back if you're gonna interrupt?
Just, uh, come make for clarification.
Okay, thank you.
Not. Targeting one person.
We're gonna stop. Okay, great. Uh, leaders are supposed to bring people together. You guys need to understand how many people have quit. How many people are talking of leaving? There's a problem. There is a problem. You guys have to understand what that problem is. People don't just quit because they want to. They quit because of a, of a leadership problem. There's a toxic hostile environment, this classic manipulation, the victim card like he did at the very beginning of this meeting. It's poor me. You hear it through every statement he makes. Everybody's against him. Uh, the lack of leadership is why we are where we're at now. The vote no of.
Again, you said the person that read the thing, victim, all that.
I didn't, I didn't mean you played a victim.
Broad, just continue, sir.
If you think you played the victim, that's on you, sir.
No, no, no. You, you said he and.
He, yes.
So yes.
There was many he's that spoke today, sir.
Go right ahead, sir.
You assume it's you because you know who that is.
Sir, go right ahead.
There was an incident on March first. You guys need to find out what happened. There's video. There's audio. There's reports. You guys need to find the truth and figure out what really happened. March first, at the Red Cross event. Please do your homework. Study it and find out what happened. The vote no, the, I'm sorry, the vote of no confidence, that's huge. That's your police force. That's the people that are protecting you. Have no confidence in a certain person. And I am not pointing at him. I am not saying his name. I'm not saying his title, but they do not have confidence in him. If you ask your citizens, they don't have confidence. There is a problem. The gentleman said there is a disruption in the city. He was one hundred percent right. Please make sure you do your homework, understand what it is and don't hear somebody just say it. Go figure it out. Go see what's on videos. Go see what's on record. Go listen to the way things are run from the head of this place. Thank you.
Can you give him a couple more seconds? You want a couple more seconds, sir? Okay. All right, you're welcome. Ms. Gloria Cantu, American Red Cross.
Gloria Cantu, seven oh eight Beryl Drive. Good evening, counsel. I stand here as a former city councilwoman and I speak today as a longtime. I stand here as a former city councilwoman, and I speak today as a longtime public servant and advocate for this community. I want to provide clarity regarding the recent collaboration between the American Red Cross and the city of Balcony Heights and to address troubling misinformation that has since followed. And I would ask that I not be interrupted, please. Dr. Daniel Martinez, Executive Director of the Red Cross and former principal of St. Gregory the Great Catholic School, our city's only school, was invited to serve on the city's Economic Development Corporation due to his longstanding ties and track record of service. In 2023, Red Cross data revealed that Balcony Heights zip code had among the highest rates of home fires in the region, combined with a median income under $30,000, 25% of residents uninsured, and a veteran population of nearly 20%. This made us a priority for their national ready communicated, community initiative. In January 2024, Dr. Martinez invited me to join a Red Cross board meeting. On, on March 20, March 1st, 2024, I helped provide insight and shape a collaborative plan to bring national support to our city. In August 2024, I joined former Mayor Suzanne DeLeon at the Red Cross Board Retreat where we witnessed firsthand home visits, smoke alarm installations, and disaster preparedness programs that saved lives. That work culminated on March 1, 2025 with a major national event bringing hundreds of volunteers, health, and housing services and the Red Cross resources to our residents at no cost to the city. As a political gesture, she did not present a proclamation. Proclamation had already been divided, excuse me, been delivered to the Red Cross on January 27, 2025. Though it was refused to be signed and later chose not to attend the event of the staff's city designated table, Mr. Rodriguez, in response, a letter was sent by Mayor Rodriguez to the Red Cross CEO falsely accusing the organization of bias, threatening IRS complaints, and attempting to rescind the proclamation. An anonymous letter echoed those false claims. The citizens of Balcony Heights deserve better to threaten to serve, to threaten to sever a partnership with the Red Cross.
Cantu, thank you. We appreciate your comments.
Council, I urge you.
Next, please, ma'am.
For a public apology by Mayor Rodriguez.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Appreciate you, Doc. This is not a popularity contest. Please refrain from clapping or giving for, for or against. Please, I don't want to have to remove anybody from the premises. Zero tolerance. Lamar Gillian, 324 Glen Arm. Unfortunately, we're gonna have to pass on Mr. Gillian. He did not put the item on the agenda as to what he wanted to talk about. So that's, we'll move on with someone else. You have to put an agenda item as subject of discussion. You didn't put it on there, sir? So I'm sorry. We'll move over to the next one. Charles D., Dan White, Jr.
I'm gonna appeal that decision.
You're interrupting the conversation, sir.
Point of order. I'm gonna appeal that decision as a council, as a council.
So if we make a motion of.
No, you cannot.
Like to make a motion to overrule, Mayor.
Sir, please remove Mr. Sines from the chambers, please. I asked him not to do this, and he did it anyway.
It's an exception.
Please remove him off the agenda.
Mayor, that was an, Mayor, it's an exception to speaking out of order if you're calling for a point of order.
He did it afterward. I had told him to stop, and then he pointed.
And he's making a motion to overrule your, your ruling.
I'd like to second the motion.
Him that Mr. Lamar Gillian did not have an item on the agenda to discuss. He can't have it both ways, guys. You guys, you get people to come up, and then if they don't have an item on the agenda, you won't let them talk about it. Now you do this, and now you wanna have it, let him speak. So which one is it? Make a demise and stick to the rules.
Mayor, I'd like to follow the rules and Robert's Rules of Order. We have appealed your decision. We have a motion and a second.
After, when I told you do not.
The way, I, okay, may I continue, may I continue to speak? May I continue to speak? May I continue to speak?
The problem we're having in the meetings.
Exactly, and that's why I want clarification.
So y'all have a motion and a second. You need a vote.
But they're not following the protocol, okay? They're not following the rules of decorum. They're disrupting the meeting by speaking and saying, Mayor.
Ultimately, whether or not that's true is up to the majority.
Yes, but I said, he has to be recognized, and I said, no.
And, and there's an exception to ask, having to ask to be recognized if what you're doing is making a motion to overrule.
Mr. Gillian, please come up. Your, your gentleman here would like for you to hear, so let's get.
So then you need to.
Move through.
Then you need to withdraw the second, then you need to withdraw the second and the motion if that's the case.
Quit doing them as you go along.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. So the motion, the second drawn.
Okay.
And you can proceed. Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Gillian.
Before my time starts, I have a legal question. Oh.
Direct, you're gonna have to direct your comments to the city council. Yes, sir. If they direct me to answer a question, I can.
Question I have is, I'm commenting on the mayor's le, letter in the April Newsletter. Is that legal? Is that legal for me to do that, to comment on the mayor's letter? I'm asking you, Mayor.
I'm thinking about it, okay? Give me a second. Give me a second.
You're actually not, you're actually not allowed to give an answer.
Actually trying to make a decision.
You're actually not allowed to give an answer here? So the, 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 your discussion is limited to reading existing policy or answering a fact question?
Yes. Okay, so what I was trying to.
Any like discussion?
Just for the record, everybody's laughing about it, but it's not funny. What I was trying to do was determine whether Mr., one of our council members has left or not. That's what I noticed. He's left the seat. He left. Who else left? Mr. Valverde. So now we have only three council members and myself.
You still gotta quorum. You're good. You just can't take, no, yeah.
No, no, wait, I can vote now.
No.
We got three, right?
Only, only in the event of a tie.
So you got in event of a tie, correct. Okay, good.
You just lost a quorum.
We still have a quorum. So, so without a quorum, what happens is y'all can actually continue the meeting. You can discuss things. You just can't take any action because it's not a quorum.
Well, this is an example, ladies and gentlemen, your council.
Yes, ma'am. This is an example of a government that is not functioning. As you can see, no one can speak. Mayor, I want to applaud you for the way you ran this meeting. It's perfect. Your leadership exemplifies your approach to only your way of thinking, only your ideas.
Trying to follow the rules.
Thank you for making it very clear to the citizens that you strive to just do what you want to do and only on your terms. Please remember, we are here to serve the citizens, and I appreciate that you're recognizing me. And I thank you that for recognizing that your leadership is, is not conducive to the city. Thank you.
Leave the meeting. You're leaving. So thank you very much.
I just want to say one, one thing on the way out, and it's real brief. I have never been denied my rights under the First Amendment to speak. I served in Vietnam for seven months and came home with 101st Airborne Division when we were sent home. I served honorably. I served eight years for my country. And I deeply regret that this happened tonight because it should never happen. I have a right to speak under citizens to be heard. It does not have to be on the agenda. That's why you have citizens to be heard. Thank you.
Thanks, please. Don't inform that. So here it says, subject of the item of discussion. It has to be written in here. You have to fill out the form and bow with the city secretary for all, for all. Okay, sounds good. All right, thank you so much. Mr. Charles White, Jr., 211 Leisure Drive. Go right ahead, sir.
Just to be clear, so the rule in this is if, in the event the mayor or a council member relieves the council room and the remaining members do not constitute a quorum, which is the case, the council may continue to discuss matters listed on the agenda, but may take no vote or conduct other business. And I would also just caution y'all that if, insofar, the meeting's ended, so insofar as anything you discuss here, you end up discussing with a quorum of members.
That's correct.
That would lead to an open meetings violation. So, yeah.
All right, great.
There would be no minutes. Yeah, we're in, the meeting's over, so.
We haven't even got started to business. Okay, Mr. White, you have.
Mayor, Council.
You have items, several items you want to discuss.
Mayor, one thing that you may not be aware of, Mr. Gillian.
Mr. Sines, excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt you. You're disrupting the meeting, sir. Could you please leave?
Yeah, the meeting's over and none of the rules apply anymore.
So he's disrupting the meeting, though.
There's no meeting occurring.
So we don't have.
There's no decorum.
He can disrupt all, anybody can talk, do whatever.
This is like just a bunch of people in a.
No, no control. No control at all, nothing going on. You can't control what you can say or do.
No, I mean, the meeting, y'all, y'all can continue talking, but it's just.
Go ahead, Mr. White, present yourself.
Well, uh.
I don't want to hear what's really the truth.
Well, what, you're not aware of Mr. Gillian has a bad knee?
What's that?
And, and he was late.
I never even talked about you. I don't even know what you're talking about. I don't even know what you're.